All right, good morning. It's now nine oh two. I'm going to start the hearing for Connecticut Clinical Services Incorporated and A M C P Treatment Intermediate LLC, docket number twenty-four dash three-two-seven-seven-zero dash C O N. Good morning, everybody. C T Clinical Services Incorporated and A M C P Treatment Intermediate LLC. The applicants in this matter seek a certificate of need for the transfer of ownership pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Sections nineteen A dash six thirty-eight, paren small A, paren two. Specifically, the applicant seek approval for ownership for, sorry, seek approval for the transfer of ownership of C T Clinical Services Incorporated's parent corporation, C T Clinical Partners Incorporated, to A M C P Treatment Intermediate LLC. Throughout this proceeding, I'll be entertain interchangeably referring to C T Clinical Services Incorporated as C T Clinical and A M C P Treatment Intermediate LLC as A M C P for brevity purposes. Today is May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Alicia Novi. Doctor D J S Gifford, the Commissioner of the Office of Health Strategy, designated me to serve as Hearing Officer in this matter to rule on all motions and recommended here and recommended findings of facts and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. Public Act number twenty-one dash two, as amended by Public Act number twenty-two dash three, authorizes the agency to hold public hearings by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic hearing, she'll make a good faith effort to state his, her, or their name and title at the onset of each occasion that person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We may ask that all members, or sorry, we ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes nineteen A dash six thirty-nine A, paren small F, paren two, which provides that H S P may hold a public hearing with respect to any certificate of need application submitted under chapter three sixty-eight Z. Although this will be a discretionary hearing, the manner which O H S conducts these proceedings will be guided by chapter fifty-four of the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act and the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies, Sections nineteen A dash nine through twenty-four. The Office of Health Strategy staff are here to help me in gathering facts related to this application and may ask the applicant witnesses questions. I'm going to ask each person assisting today to identify themselves with their name, the spelling of their last name, and their O H S title.
Uh, good morning. Stephen Lazarus, L A Z A R U S. I am the C O N program supervisor.
Good morning. My name is Yedera McLoglin, M C L A U G H L I N, and I'm the planning analyst.
Also present is Maida Capozzi, a staff member from our agency, who is assisting with the hearing logistics and will gather the names for public comment. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority and the priority is, but the priority is the integrity and transparency of the process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and a video will be made available on the O H S website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review through our certificate of need portal, which is accessible on the Office of Health Strategies C O N webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with Section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you either in the course of entering this hearing or at nine oh two, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the hearing. All right, the Connecticut port, or sorry, the C O N portal contains pre-hearing table of record in this case. At this, at the, the time of Tuesday, exhibits were identified in the table from A through L, although there are other exhibits I will get to. The applicant is hereby notice that I'm taking advantage, or sorry, that I'm taking administrative notice of the following documents. The statewide facility is the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan, the facilities and services inventory, the O H S acute care hospital discharge database, and the all payer claims data. I may also take administrative notice of the hospital reporting systems, H R S, financial and utilization data, and all, and also other O H S decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant in this matter. Counsel for the applicants, can you please identify yourselves for the record?
Sure. Vincenzo Carnante, C A R A N N A N T E.
Good morning. And Benjamin Jensen, J E N S E N Robinson and Cole, on behalf of A M C P, also joined by Connor Duffy, D U F F Y.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, attorneys Karen Ante and Jensen, are there any, are there any objections to exhibits in the table of record or the notice documents?
No, Hearing Officer, no.
All right, okay. At this time, all identified and marked exhibits are introduced full exhibits. Attorney Karen Ante and Jensen, do you have any additional exhibits that you would wish to enter at this time?
We do not.
Okay. All right, we'll proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I wish to advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of your proposed, of your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, the completeness responses, and the pre-file testimony, and I will do so many times before issuing my, before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during proceedings. All participants should mute their devices and should disable cameras when they go off record or take a break. Please be advised that although we try and shut off the recording during, the hearing, uh, recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video not disabled will be accessible to all participants in the hearing. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in the order established by O H S during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or O H S staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. Registration for public comment is currently open. Please sign up in the chat by stating your full name and phone number in the chat. Our support staff, Maida Capozzi, will keep a list of all registrations. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment, as O H S may have follow-up questions based on the public comment. Are there any housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before the start, attorneys Karen Ante and Jensen?
None on my part, Hearing Officer, no.
We're all set, thank you.
Great. Okay, um, at this point, I will allow you to go ahead and give an opening statement for the applicant. Um, I don't know who's going to give that, so I will.
Sure, uh, on behalf of Turnbridge Hearing Officer Novi, my goal, you'll, you'll be happy to hear this, is to speak as little as possible today, as I know how much you love the attorneys talking. Uh, and so my opening statement is, I would just love to introduce, uh, the president of, of Turnbridge and to allow his pre-file testimony. Again, if you want to swear any people in at this time, or if you want to have everyone take their oath, that's fine with me, or we would like to jump in right into the pre-file testimony.
So I will get there, all right. Um, so what I'm going to ask you to do, Attorney Karen Ante, is to identify all the individuals by name and title who are going to testify on behalf of your application. Um, and we'll allow them, if they're not in the room with you, to turn on their cameras and just say a quick hello, then I will swear them in after they are all identified, and we will go ahead and proceed with our testimony.
Sure, um, so the, the two people definitely testifying today on behalf of Turnbridge are David Bu um, and the founder and CEO, and Brett Taberio, um, president. And you said spell their, spell their names, the last names?
Yes, actually, um, you know what, while they each say their name so that the, um, the court reporter can get a, um, they can spell their last names.
Perfect, David.
I'm David Bu, the founder and CEO of Turnbridge, last name spelled B as in Victor, I E A U, and good morning.
Good morning.
Brett Taberio, president at Turnbridge, T as in Tom, I, B as in boy, E as in Edward, R, I, O, good morning.
Good morning, all right. So, uh, do you have any other attorney Karen Ante?
Those are, that's it for right now. If there are questions that come up later, obviously, as you know, you can swear them in at that time. Uh, but I think right now that's, that's all we need.
All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you both to please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the testimony you are about to provide shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury? Um, we will start on the left, if you can say your name and say I do. I'm sorry, uh, you guys can't see, um.
I do.
Yes, thank you, and just say your name.
David Bu.
Thank you.
He is the founder.
Brett Taberio, I do.
Thank you, all right. I'm going to write your names down so I can get them right. I'm sorry, because unfortunately, you can't see what I'm pointing at, so.
We don't know our rights from our laps over here.
All right.
And Hearing Officer Novi, this is Ben Jensen. Would you like me to have my witness sworn in as well?
Yeah, I was going to go to you next. I just wanted to write their names down first.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, Attorney Jensen, uh, your, your witnesses.
Thank you. I will plan to offer testimony from one witness today on behalf of A M C P. Uh, that individual is Robert Heisch, who's a partner at Alvarez and Marcel Capital Partners. Uh, Rob, could you please introduce yourself?
Hi, good morning, Hearing Officer Novi and staff of the Office of, uh, Health Strategy. Appreciate the opportunity to testify today and for your hard work. My name is Robert Heisch, spelled H A I S C H.
Okay, wonderful. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. I'm going to swear you in at this time. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the testimony you're about to provide shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. You can go ahead and put your hand down now. Attorney Jensen, do you have any other witnesses?
Uh, no, just like Attorney Carnante, uh, we do have other individuals available if questions arise that are more appropriate for them to answer.
All right, wonderful. I also wrote his name down so I can get that right as well, thank you. Um, all right, I want to remind all the witnesses, um, that you can, we have read any pre-file testimony that was submitted. We have reviewed that. You do not have, if you are, if you'd like, you can, you know, you can adopt your pre-file testimony at the beginning, state your name, adopt your pre-file testimony, and then you can go on with any additional testimony you would like. You do not have to reread your pre-file submitted testimony, as I have read that, and every, and our, um, and our analysts have read that as well. However, if that is what you would like to do, you can also read that as well. All right. So I would like you to just remember that, for the sake of anyone listening, that if you could please define any acronyms for the benefit of the public and the clarity of the record. Um, while you may know the acronyms you are using, it is likely that the public may not, so if you can, uh, give us a, um, the definition of any acronyms you're using, we appreciate that, and also large, um, any difficult words or unusual spellings, if you could spell that out for the court reporter, we appreciate that as well. All right, um, attorneys Jensen and Karen Ante, who is going first?
Uh, Mr. Kazan, I will go first.
Hi, Hearing Officer Novi. My name is Brett Taberio, as, as stated earlier. Uh, I, at this time, adopt my pre-file testimony and have nothing to add at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So what we're going to do is we're going to do testimony first, and I'll do questions afterwards. Um, okay, so your next witness?
Uh, Attorney Jensen.
Thank you. Rob, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, good morning. Um, thank you for the opportunity again to testify. Uh, I'm a partner A and M Capital, which is seeking through the applicant A M C P Treatment Intermediate to become the new financial sponsor for C T Clinical Services Inc., doing business as Turnbridge. For the record, I adopt my pre-file testimony.
Do you have any additional testimony you would like to offer?
Uh, I don't think at this time I, yeah.
All right, next witness.
That's, those are all the witnesses I'm aware of, attorney.
Uh.
Hearing Officer Novi.
Is attorney, or not attorney, is, um, Mr. David Blue, I'm going to.
Uh, Bu like, like a great Bu.
Um.
We, we didn't have any pre-file for him, so, and we don't have any direct questions for Mr. Taberio and/or David Bu. Uh, and so, uh, we're, we're all set with witnesses on our end. I'll allow Attorney Jensen testimonies for A M C P.
Yeah, no, no direct questions at this time, thank you.
All right, so we will go immediately into our questions. Um, I have, we'll start with some background questions that I have. Um, how many facilities are being purchased as a part of this transaction?
Hi, Hearing Officer Novi, this is Brett Taberio speaking. So, uh, directly, um, in connection directly with the application, there are two facilities. Uh, that is our New Haven Clinic and our Westport Clinic. Both are licensed by the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health and also State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families. Um, C T Clinical as an organization also has other programs uh, and facilities that we operate that are outside of, uh, the governance of, of this application. Um, in total, we have, um, two, two additional programs, so three in total, and, um, we have twenty-three facilities that we own and operate.
Okay, so it, when we are, when something is being bought, we do want to know the extent of what is being bought. And so to say, two facilities, but twenty-three programs. Um, you know, that's, it's a lot different than what the application was, which pretty much focused around two facilities. Um, what I would like you guys to do is, uh, speak to a little bit of why, why the, uh, twenty-three programs were not listed in the application.
Sure, Brett Taberio, again. So I, I do believe that in the application, we provided, uh, license, our licenses with the Department of Children and Families and Department of Public Health that sort of encapsulates the breadth of our, our programs and facilities. Um, the, the application itself is in regards to the, the Connecticut Department of Public Health licensed facilities, which are the New Haven Clinics and Westport Clinics. And while we have twenty-three facilities, they, they really fall under three program types, if you will, and I can elaborate on that. So we have, um, outpatient programming, which are our two clinics where we offer P H P, I O P, and outpatient services. And those services are directed to both an adult and adolescent population uh, at both clinics. Um, in addition to that, we have adolescent residential treatment programs, which are licensed only by the Department of Children and Families, and we have, uh, two sites in Connecticut. One is in Killinworth, Connecticut. One is in Woodbury, Connecticut. Each of those sites have many facilities, quote unquote, uh, on the properties. Um, but it's, it's essentially just two program, two programs that we, that we operate. Uh, and then the third program type is, is what we call extended care, which is essentially long-term transitional living, reintegration programming. Um, and we have, those are predominantly based out of the greater New Haven area. That program has, uh, fifteen or so facilities within it. Um, and the service population is young adult male, young adult female, and again, adolescent aged youth. Um, the adolescent programs, uh, are also licensed by the Department of Children and Families only. Um, so when we were drafting our application, again, the, the, the Department of Public Health licensed facilities are only the two clinics, so that's where we, we had our focus. Um, but we, I, I think, did our best to mention that we do have other programs that we operate. And, you know, part of, um, the partnership with, with A M C P is designed to continue to grow access and services across all of our programs, not just the D P H licensed programs.
And, and Hearing Officer Novi, I know you, I, I know I can't testify, but I just want to point out for the record, uh, on page ten of the application, uh, there's this, but there is a table, um, where we list every single, um, facility that you're looking for um, very clearly with the D C F license number, the D P H license number, so they are all listed there.
I do see that, but it, it directly, um, contradicts the table before it, O H S Table One, where it says applicant services and service locations, where you only list two facilities, and neither of those are the ones in Table Ten. So you can see why we got confused.
Bear with me for a minute, and this is Brett Taberio, I'm just looking at the application further. Uh, so, Table One, applicant services and service locations. I, I think our interpretation of that question was the D P H licensed sites, which is what is listed there.
What I would like, and I'm going to ask for this as a late file, is a, and, and this is also for the help of, or for the public, so that they can understand what is being bought and what the, the different parts of this are, is a late file, which actually explains all of the locations of service, what, you know, um, the, what is being bought, and that includes the twenty-three, you know, the two facilities, the twenty-three clinical, so that the public can see, instead of having to, to discern, okay, well, this table's got two, there's no service area, and there's twenty-three other licenses that I don't know what, what they're doing there.
Hearing Officer, I, uh, that's fine, I'm just, you know, what if we, you know, if we, we, we tried to stick to what, you know, the jurisdiction of O H S and the D P H licensed facilities and allow, you know, D C F to do their thing, you know, what if we owned a McDonald's, a Burger King, uh, you know, a, a jet manufacturing company? We wouldn't be putting that in the, I know those are horrible, illustrative examples. We wouldn't be putting that in the application if those were also being purchased as well. I'm just trying to figure out the, the reach of the, uh, uh, of O H S on, on, on this, and we're not trying to hide anything, we're going to give you that late file, I'm just sure. That's, and, and it's my fault, this is what I directed them to do, is I said, hey, they have jurisdiction over D P H licensed facilities. We got to give them the information for the D P H licensed facilities, not D C F, but we, we don't want to hide those, we're going to list those in the, in this application. We're not going to give information that we think is superfluous or, you know, not relevant to the application. So I just want to say that's, for the record, it's my fault that they, they gave you the D P H license, uh, specific information.
So when I make findings of fact about what type of deal this is.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can properly explain, because there are facilities, there are other facility, there are other clinical programs that are, that are part of this, that I, you know, I need to be able to, to explain what these are, so that when the public reads this, they understand the extent of what is, what this transaction is.
Got it, and, and Mr. Bu wants to chime in on one thing, so if, if we're talking about the late file now, um, or I guess we can, we can talk about the late files at the end, the specifics of it, so I'll let, I'll let you chime in.
David Bu, founder, CEO, uh, Turnbridge, I appreciate your position, um, this will be a hundred percent. As I was contemplating how to talk about this potential partnership with A M C P, um, it was very difficult to, to, to stay inside the jurisdiction lines. And so I think what you're asking is, A, apropos, B, pertinent. And I just want to, again, reiterate that we try to stay inside the lines of jurisdiction, and I understood through the hearing, and I was going to say that, that whereby there is a jurisdiction, you know, a gate, this particular deal, uh, proposed deal, has a host of tenants. And our decision to partner with A M C P is reflected upon the other service lines that are outside the jurisdiction and their ability to help us expand access while keeping best-in-class care. So I think it's a very fair question, uh, obviously, uh, for the record, certainly not hiding anything, and this is going to make it easier when it's my turn to testify, to talk about how I made that decision as the founder of the organization in conjunction with the other principles of North Castle Partners. Um, so I think it opens up for us to, to speak a, across all platforms, um, to the extent, A, it helps the public, you, everyone on this Zoom, understand what our organization is, how we're helping human beings, whether they're children or adults in many different municipalities throughout the state of Connecticut, and what our future plans are, and how Rob Heisch, his team, David Bu, our team, have collectively built the thesis to do so.
Um, and under that same thing, I would like for you to, I know when you did table, uh, when you filled out the original application, you did not do a service area, um, for any of the, of the two mentioned facilities in Table One. Um, if I could get a P S A for each of those facilities, and also include in that the out-of-state breakdowns, um, including what states your out-of-state patients are coming from. Doesn't need to be the town, but, you know, are you pulling mostly from New York? Are you pulling mostly from Massachusetts? We would like to know what that forty percent of out-of-state patients, where they're coming from.
This is David Bu, just a clear question, just a clarification, are you looking for that inside the jurisdiction gates that I'm calling it? Or are we looking for that across all of our service line platforms?
No, just the two facilities, um, because when I look at, oh, um, on page nine, page nine of Exhibit One, O H S Tables Two, service area towns, you say there are none available. But you do talk about them later on, um, that one of your, that your facility in Westport is mostly, um, local people, and that New Haven has a large number of out-of-state people who, who come to the facility, who temporarily relocate to the facility. So there are P S As, and you do know who's coming to these facilities, you just didn't put it into the table, and I would like to see that and it, with a breakdown of the out-of-state people, where are these, these kids coming from? Which states? Not necessarily the towns in those states, just which states?
Hearing Officer, given that we're on the late files now, so we don't have to repeat ourselves later, can we just get some specifics on the late files now, then?
Just, I'm, I'm going to get, I'm going to, um, as we go through questions, if I have a late pile, it just, right out the gate, I had a late pile for this.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine, but can we, so, uh, let's just iron it out now, so.
No problem.
Because it's fresh on our, so late file one, specifically, what are, what, what would you like us to produce? What is the, what is the end product for late file one, and then we'll get to like.
I'm, sure, I would like, um, a list of all of all the services and service locations, including the D C F ones. And you, however you would like to do that, I need to, to understand exactly what is being bought by the, the applicant, you know, Table One listed two facilities, and then on the next page, the, the facilities with D C F and D P H are way more than the two facilities listed on pa, Table One. So I'd like to know the extent of the programs offered, where they are, and how many.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you, not putting words in your mouth, but you would like O H S Table One, basically, you know, but adding our D C F licensed facilities, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, that's late file one, and then late file two. Um, there is an O H S Table Ten, um, where we list, um, where everyone's coming from, the utilization by town, correct?
Yes, but it doesn't list out-of-state. It just says out-of-state is listed as a giant group.
Yeah.
So I don't know where they're coming from.
That's fine, and so that last number is a hundred and seventy-two out-of-state. You just want that broken down by which states, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we will, we will do that.
Yeah.
All right, sorry for interrupting, keep going. I just wanted to do a while with all collections, so we know. And I'll, I'll say, what, what did we say an hour ago?
And, uh, Hearing Officer Novi, this is Brett Taberio, just one points of clarification as well, Table, um, page ten.
Yes.
Number, page ten does include the sites listed in O H S Table One. So at the, the five bottom rows, one eighty-nine Orange Street, one sixty-two Kings Highway, those are the, the two clinics that are mentioned in O H S Table One.
I, I understand, but for the public, you're asking them to do a lot of work to understand what you're buying, and I would like them to have. And I would like them to have a table that they can see and understand instead of having to deductively reason that 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 you say you're only buying two facilities in the first table, but then you list a bunch of other facilities in the second table. Um, we just want to make sure that everybody can see
True.
in a single location.
Fair point, and we will do so.
Okay. Um, I know, uh, next we'll ask about, uh, the application emphasizes that leadership will remain the same. Is this true for the governing board of directors as well?
Uh, Brett Tiberio speaking again. Um, the executive leadership and clinical medical leadership teams will not be changing as a result of this application. The Board of Directors will be cha- will be changing as a result of the application currently. Um, there are two boards that exist in our partnership with North Castle Partners. Um, in uh CT Clinical Partners, the parent company has a board and Turnbridge CT Clinical has a board. Uh, those two boards today are are slightly different. The CT Clinical Partners' parent company has five members, five directors on the board. The Turnbridge Company Board has only three directors on the board. Um, as a result of this application, if it is approved, the North Castle Partners, who is our current private equity financial sponsor, um, their seats will um be vacated and A and A M C P will um, obtain new seats as a result of this application. In addition, we will be sort of consolidating the way that the boards are are structured between parents and operating company. So in under the the proposed transaction application, there will be just a a mirror board between parent company and operating company. Um, notably, the other thing worth pointing out is in the proposed board structure, um, the Turnbridge CT Clinical Team will actually have more representation on on the new board. Um, so David View, our our founder and and CEO, myself, Brett Tiberio, President, and then our Executive Vice President, James Hazelton, will all have, if approved, seats on the in the new board structure, um, which again is just a mirror board between parent and um, operating company. I know I just said a lot, so happy to answer questions. It's a little bit confusing.
Can you explain the the mirror board?
Yeah, the idea is just to have continuity between the parent and operating company. So um, we in instead of having a board of directors that is is meeting with regards to just the operating company, um, we will be able to consolidate those things and and be talking about, you know, strategy and um accessibility and growth and all of these things uh as as one board altogether with representation from both Turnbridge or CT Clinical um, and also from AMCP, uh, all with seats at the table.
Since these boards are made up of the same people, um, will you be discussing multiple, you know, if you had a CT clinical question, well, could that be asked in um the Turnbridge Parent Meeting as well? Because I'm trying to figure out how these would interact. Would you be combining agendas for both of these, or would they only have separate meetings?
I, I I think more more to be determined, but as of today, our our intention is to combine agendas.
This is David View, uh, founder, CEO. It was a similar structure that Brett did a very good job of parsing out with North Castle Partners. Uh, and that partnership was, has been going on since the last ten years. We consolidated all board activity over a ten-year period into one. There was never separate board meetings.
Okay. Um, will AMCP, I mean, it sounds a little silly because it is a mirror board. So will AMP CP appoint board members for Turnbridge in a way because of this mirror board?
Um, the n- no, A A AMP P has the right to appoint four directors to the board, uh, four of the seven seats essentially. And then uh Turnbridge has the ability to appoint the remaining three seats. And as of today, the intention is to appoint David Brett Tiberio and James Hazelton to those seats.
And with the new board, what is the role that that the board will play? This, um, what decisions?
This is David View, founder and CEO. Um, this is an excellent question. And I think to answer the question effectively, need to step back. When, you know, we made the decision, I made the decision at the time because I was the only principal uh, ten years ago in thinking about bringing on a financial sponsor. Um, was very contemplative of who that sponsor would be, how they'd interact, what they would ultimately direct me to do, how much direction they would have, and clearly legally, when you sell the company, you give up some percentage of control. Um, and there was a host of trepidation on my part of doing that, given, you know, this was my baby. I started it, um, grew it, um, cultivated the talent, the processes and whatnot. Um, and I think in that process, um, I I think it's just very important to state that I didn't go out looking for the highest bidder. I went out looking for what I thought the best partner would be. Um, in comes North Castle. We go through the board process. And what happened there was the board met, you know, several times a year, talked about high-level growth strategy, created a thesis that incidentally, we collectively built before we decided to enact the partnership. And that made me feel comfortable. And I got to see, given what's in the rearview mirror is a hundred percent clarity, that over a decade, the way they talked about interacting with me and how we delivered care was going to be zero to do with how we actually create clinical processes, make medical decisions, and moreover, to help me and the organization expand and and create access, um, and certainly efficacy. Skipping forward to, and I think it's also important to note that Rob Hayes uh, used to work at North Castle Partners. And when we went through this process of going on to the next financial sponsor for a host of reasons, uh, one of which is certainly material that North Castle just doesn't have the capital to help us meet the demand. Okay, to the other service lines that are that are outside of the jurisdiction gates. So these adolescent uh programs that we run that make up, you know, twenty-plus facilities under two programs, there is a mental health crisis for children in the country, and certainly Connecticut is is not without that. Um, and and we we have wait lists that are that are quite long. Um, and so in looking at the next partner, um, it was very similar to the North Castle uh, process where where we again didn't go out to the highest bidder. We had many, many organizations come in over a year period of time that we met with, and this whittled down to AMCP because of the shared thesis. Um, the board structure, again, legally, from a liability perspective and a host of stuff that's above my pay grade allows it to be set up that way. It's the thesis, it's the relationships, it's the the trust, uh, through, by the way, you know, a year of whittling through so many different organizations. And oftentimes, you know, we asked a a lot of questions. How do you feel about expanding services? We don't want to expand services. We want to cut costs. Thank you, but no, thank you. So we got to a place, I got to a place, it was very fortunate that the principle of North Castle allowed me, which is uncommon, but really just speaks to the decision we made ten years ago that it was the right partner to allow us to have, even though I didn't have, right, the proper percentage to make the number one decision, it was given the ability to choose the partner that would help us again, create more access to meet the demand um outside the jurisdiction gate of of mentally ill children that is just plaguing this country. Um, um, and to be able to do that and feel comfortable in doing it. So it was an exhaustive process. Uh, and and Rob Hayes, AMCP, and Turnbridge have been building a thesis as to what we're going to do. So there's the long answer. The short answer is my understanding through through now nine months as we've gone through this process with you, where I am managing multiple boards, in effect, two, but I think really there's four, okay, boards, myself, um, dealing with North Castle, which is, you you know, Chip Bear and AMCP, which is ultimately Rob Hayes and myself. We are collectively, as this process unfolds and obviously eager to to end it and and to get going so that we can meet the need, uh, create access, et cetera. I've had now nine months to work with Rob and his team. And we are enacting on the thesis a hundred percent. And the way that's going down is is that they are talking about helping us. I think a lot of the words that are used, how can we support you? Right, to 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 enact your goals, uh, your business strategies. Um, so, you know, you never know, obviously, I want to be very honest. Um, but the only thing that I've sort of said through the process is the best way to determine, you know, the future is to slow it down, to ask very intense questions. And then this process, uh, uh, no offense to that, not that, you know, it it's been, it's been great sitting here waiting, it has actually, in in in, to be very honest, given us the ability to build these relationships, and we're running the business effectively together. Um, and they are providing support in areas that will be accessed, multi-platform, which is something that embarrassingly enough is not necessarily my forte. Now, I've developed systems and and programs that help people. And because we've had some 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 success there because people have actually gotten better, the organization has grown exponentially, which has created a host of back-of-the-house uh issues that 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 we are relying on the Chip Bears of North Castle and the Rob Hays of AMCP.
Hi, I'm going to ask you, um, has the current investor, North Castle Partners, played a similar hands-off? Like, what was the role that they have played?
That's an excellent question. I'm sorry to cut you off. Is that is that a two-part question?
What was the, what was the role that North Castle has played in your organization? And how is the new partner? Is it going to be a similar role? What's theirs going to look like? So two parts.
I think that is probably, in my humble opinion, the most pertinent question to this entire process. Um, so North Castle, and and again, I got to step back, right? This, again, I wasn't on a ride, you know, that 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 I had no control over. I actually drove the bus, which was the ride looking for North Castle. And all the questions that I asked were, how are you going to manage the business now, once I, once I relinquish control? And I got very lucky, y- you know, I suppose, um, that they took a very hands-off approach, right? Where where they came in with their thesis, they looked at our organization a decade ago as sort of this very efficacious, um, very familial, um, little diamond in the rough that was helping people at record rates. They could feel sense and see this anecdotally. Part of the thesis was to 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 quantify that and to do research studies, right, to ultimately help us quantify what they thought to be true. So that was part of their thesis. They wanted to help us grow and create more access. And so that was the collective decision, which again, quote unquote, was the thesis. The way that played out is those were the areas of the board meetings that we talked about. The day-to-day, the clinical, who comes into the program, right, you know, where they sleep, you know, what their programming is, you know, the host of different clinicians or doctors at different levels that are going to manage the the that particular client's stay, and then journey forward is never spoken about ever at a board meeting. And 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 so what they did is help us with the thesis that we agreed to do. And and I think for record, what does that mean drilling down? Well, they helped us partner with Yale that has a huge research team and the ability to quantify, do research studies. Through that work, we got exponentially better at providing treatment. It also created more access. The the combination of those two brands collaborating was very, very powerful. I I I would speak for hours about how that helped. So at a high level, we enacted that thesis. In comes Rob Hayes, Tommy, team, AMCP. We again built a thesis, right? And so there there on paper and impracticality should be zero difference as to how those boards function. They don't get into, nor do they want to get bogged down, nor do they understand the complexities of medical treatment, clinical treatment, experiential treatment. Their expertise is in helping us ultimately expand those services into different geographies, like different age range, et cetera. So in theory and in practicality over the last nine months, there has been zero difference between North Castle and AMCP. And again, I think an important point is that Rob Hayes used to work for North Castle, uh, which which for for quite a period of time, and it sort of grew up there and developed there. His mannerisms, the way he thinks about behavioral healthcare, health, and he is on here and can speak to it whenever he'd like, right, and how to ultimately help us do that is very similar to Chip Bear. That was comforting to me. And again, in the last nine months, I've seen zero difference.
Hi, it's uh, it's Rob Hayes with AMCP. If if it's helpful to jump in.
Yes, go ahead.
A a couple, couple thoughts. Um, so so first, as emphasized in my pre-file testimony and in Brett's, we at AMCP have no involvement in clinical decisions. We have never, we would never get involved in clinical decision-making. Not only is that not permitted by law and license requirements, but also would run counter to our entire investment partnership approach. We look to partner with experienced leaders and clinicians. We trust, uh, because we want the best, most experienced qualified experts who can make and find essential clinical decisions. So that that's a clear uh point we wanted to make uh in front of the group here. Our thesis is focused around patient care and access to care and expanding both of these points. The current financial sponsor currently does not have access to additional capital to provide Turnbridge. The catalyst for this transaction was for the company to, in essence, swap out financial sponsors in order to provide additional capital for the team to invest behind clinical services, equipment, facilities to serve the state of Connecticut. So that in a, as precise as I can be, like, that is the mission that we invested behind. We would not do this investment without David, Brett, Jamie and their team. That's why they're all on the Board of Directors. That's why there are no changes in senior management. Their approach to the business, serving the community, serving patients and young people in need in this epidemic that does exist, we believe we can help address these challenges with the young, with young people in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. What aspect of AMPC, um, sorry, AMCP's parents or affiliates experience led Turnbridge to choose them as the financial partner over others?
David, you CEO, founder, I think Rob encapsulated it very well. I think what he said is exactly what was appealing to to myself, to Brett, and 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 to the executive team, as well as the North Castle team. They have a a a a large consulting on which, again, I think Rob's probably best to address that. Um, their organization is multifaceted, right? So A, obviously, the capital was very attractive to us, but that was just the beginning. And then secondarily, we looked at a host of transactions in different portfolio organizations that they have sponsored, where they've taken them, how well they've done. Um, we had the ability to call these organizations, to talk to these people, to see how they related back and forth. You know, were they micromanaged? Were they not? Uh, was the capital actually available? Did they actually allocate capital? Um, did they, did 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 they get down into the weeds, if you will? And and the answer across the board was no. They provided the capital, they were at arms-length distance. They use their consulting and a host of different parts of their organization were available with back-of-the-office uh 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 stuff, as well as, um, I think what Rob said, growth. And as you grow, it brings on, certainly to Rob's point, i- it is addressed in the epidemic, but running an organization, it means you're hiring a host of different people. There's human resources aspects to this, right? And they have a host of different arms. And if Rob, you want to talk about those arms and how you've done, then I think it might be pertinent.
We've had a number of different investments within healthcare companies, all focused on providing best-in-class patient care, as well as accelerating access to care for the patients population that these various companies are addressing. So that is our approach that we're looking to um bring to the partnership with the Turnbridge management team, many of which you see in the conference room uh currently. You know, costs within healthcare delivery are up, inflation expenses are up. We have found investments in technology and supporting operators are critical to be able to deliver care into the local communities in Connecticut. You know, that that will be our focus uh in our potential partnership with the team.
Okay, um, staying on this, what experience, and you did touch upon it a little bit, but I'd like you to expand it. What experiences AMCP have in acquiring facilities or your parent company have?
So so we have invested um in a number of different um end markets, including orthopedic uh, end markets. That includes practices. Um, to be, to be fair, that is a managed service organization that is not involved in delivering. Um, to be, to be fair, that is a managed service organization that is not involved in delivery of care. Right? So consistent with the theme, one of my opening statements, right, around we are not involved in patient care in any way and never will be. Um, there was an example provided in our pre-testimony, um, around EMS services and providing, uh, care to, uh, patients in need in an emergent setting. Um, again, not involved in clinical care, providing investment into the care delivery, growth, technology, uh, in order, uh, to drive better, uh, and care to patients.
Um, what changes has AMCP made when it acquired facilities or improvements?
Uh, a, a common theme is supporting existing managers and care, uh, delivery professionals. Common investments include, uh, technology and compliance, which can drive better, uh, reporting, better, uh, better transparency to any regulatory authorities. It provides the ability to hire more caregivers to increase access to care. Um, those would be some of the key areas.
Does AMCP, uh, negotiate payer contracts on behalf of the facilities it has acquired?
We do not.
Uh, does AMCP set clinical guidelines or policies for facilities that is acquired?
We do not.
Um, do you have any evidence of quality improvements from prior facility acquisitions?
Examples of quality improvements? I think we, we'll have to follow up. I don't want to shoot off the cuff. The, the, I, I can say confidently, there are no, uh, downgrades in quality of care. Right? Where the, ultimately, the quality of care is driven by the management teams, which we have no input into. We can provide resources to, in the back office, uh, in order to free up management caregivers to deliver care. Uh, we do not directly impact or have any influence over delivery of care.
Um, I'm gonna have a follow-up question, but then we'll, we'll, uh, Terry Jensen will do a late file. Do you have any evidence of access improvements from prior facility acquisition?
Yes, yeah. We, we have through opening new facilities, um, through even merging smaller businesses that can take advantage of the technology. And this, uh, to increase, again, those two same themes, increase patient care and increase access to care.
Um.
I, I believe as there is an example of, of the emergency medical services, uh, business included in some of the pre-filing testimony.
Terry Jensen, I'm gonna ask for, um, a late file, um, just a written explanation of some of the, uh, the access and quality improvements in quality or access and quality improvements in prior facility acquisitions.
Understood. And just, uh, building off what Rob just said, in his pre-file testimony, there is reference to an increase in transfer, transports by the EMS solutions organization of 250,000 per year to approximately 450,000 transports per year. So I, I'm assuming you're looking for more illustrative examples like that?
Yes, yes. Uh, any, you know, if they instituted a electronic health record system, something like that, so we could see some of the technology increases or access, things that have helped them. I know he mentioned that, you know, they've freed up frontline people. What are some of those examples of how they helped free up people with technology?
Yeah, we're happy to do that. There was significant investment technology in that example. Happy to follow up.
This is David View, again, founder and CEO. I think it's also important to note that, again, Rob and I keep talking about thesis. Let me drill down on what that is. Part of the thesis is the, 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 the growth, which is going to create access to care in Connecticut. Um, when the trash, transaction actually does transpire, uh, if you approve it, uh, they will be injecting millions of dollars of capital right onto our balance sheet to allow us to grow. We already have a plan to grow. Um, and let's talk about outside of the, the jurisdiction gate, right? The adolescent services at one of our platforms in Killingworth, we're currently expanding, building buildings there now. Um, and given that this process has taken the amount of time it's taken, we're moving on to the next building on that campus, which hasn't been contemplated uh, in the money and, and, and they are already going to be infusing capital for that as well. So we're already growing and they're already providing access, so they don't actually own the organization yet. So this, this part of the, the main part of the thesis is to expand services, which ultimately creates access. The capital that they have, that they will be injecting initially, is a large part of carrying that thesis out.
Um, actually, let's stay on that. I do have some questions. Um, you did say in Exhibit A, page 24, as a result of this proposal, Turnbridge will utilize additional capital, resources and expertise provided by AMCP Treatment to grow its non-DPH licensed facilities throughout the state of Connecticut. These are residential treatment programs listed or licensed only by DCAPP. Can you expand that statement? I know you just gave us a little more that you are expanding buildings on that campus. I'd like to hear more about that.
Yeah, sure. Happy to do it. Uh, it's the most exciting, but obviously saddening part of what's going on at this particular time in, you know, 2025. Uh, there, again, we can't make, I can't say it enough, that there is an epidemic for children. So we currently have waitlists, right, at, at our, at our adolescent residential treatment service line that, 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 you know, vacillate anywhere from, you know, five to six weeks to multiple months, right, depending on time of year. Um, I, I am, you know, founded this in 2003, I am still there, and quite frankly, I don't have an office at the corporate building. My office is actually on the campus in Killingworth, where we treat children. It's part of how I direct care. It's part of how I run the organization. So, so I can see, meet the parents, talk to the parents, see the children. That is very, very instrumental and implemental to me and how I ultimately direct decisions on building systems, delivering care, expanding, et cetera. Um, circling back to the waitlist that drives access, in comes AMCP. We've got a building, which is a house, actually, and that's how we deliver care for children, is we try to make the houses as close to a house that they would be in, in their home environment. So A, it is less challenging, less shocking, and more importantly, right? You, you're going to help them transition back to a house very, very similar. So we're building a house on the campus that will, that will house, uh, eight children. We, we've already gotten the approval from the local zoning officials and town authorities, et cetera. Um, again, now, you know, ne- ne- for, for no other reason than it's factual, given the length of time of this, we're on to the next. So I'm in the process of, of, of negotiating with another house that is adjacent to that, to that property, which in, in, encapsulates eight or nine different houses and buildings. Um, and that transaction should be done in the next month or so. To, to, to effectuate that transaction, we need capital. We're actually in limbo here because the, the North Castle doesn't have any capital. And even if they did, weren't going to be investing in a business that they're exiting potentially. In comes Rob. The conversations go like this. Rob, part of our thesis was to buy the, the, the adjoining property. He said, yeah, it's on the thesis. We're ready to go. Whatever you need. We will find a way to get you the capital. And, and that's where we are. So that would be another house. Um, and that little house, another eight kids. And we have an opportunity, there's 150 acres on the south side of, of our 90 to 100 acre campus there. Uh, and I am currently negotiating with that owner, which incidentally was the actual owner of, of, of the property we own now. We bought a piece of his land. And that's multiple millions, uh, just in land, would be probably upwards of $10 million of capital for infrastructure, buildings, facilities, um, et cetera. That is part of the thesis as well. So we, 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 we are going to continue to provide access, right, to meet the demand of the marketplace. As sad as it is, it's very demanding here in Connecticut. I think one of the, the things we're most proud of, these are world-class facilities. This is a 20-plus-year-old organization that has literally invented levels of care in the industry, that has taken that knowledge, um, its institutional knowledge into the adolescent space outside of the jurisdictional gates, but very, very important to this transaction, the actual breadth of what Turnbridge is and where it's going. For a second, we, the, the outpatient, the, the PHP clinics, whether they stand alone or they're connected to this extended care, which is a level of service I invented, are very, very close to my heart, are very efficacious. North Castle and Turnbridge did a lot of work through Yale to codify those systems to, 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 to quantify efficacy there. It is incredibly important to me personally. It is the heartbeat of Turnbridge. It is what we are known for. As, as, as society has changed, the opioid epidemic has, has, has simmered down, thank God. Um, you know, unfortunately emerged through COVID and a host of, 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 of other things, this mental health crisis for, for children. We pride ourselves on, on helping, whether, whether you're, 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 you're a child, that, that it's a girl, you're, you're, you're a man that is 27 years old, our ability to help. And we pride ourselves on meeting what society and, and, and very locally here in Connecticut needs. Where that is now is more predominantly an adolescent. That's not to say that Rob Hayes and myself do not have plans to continue to make the entities inside the jurisdictional gate exponentially better, more access and more efficacious. But most of the thesis is to meet what the phone is ringing for, which is children and mental health crisis. And this will be, you know, tens of millions of dollars investments over the next five to 10 years.
Um, can you talk a little bit about how this can, uh, it, it sounds like a lot of residential access? Um, how you'll expand access to partial hospitalization and intensive outpatient programming?
It's another fantastic question. And I think, you know, that TBD is the, is the, is the super transparent answer, but philosophically, when you look at our thesis and you look at the growth plan and you understand the full continuum of care, how to help individuals. If efficacy is the driving factor, um, it is just a common fact in our behavioral health world that the longer an individual at any age range stays connected to some treatment episode, efficacy drives. So we are, quote unquote, experts at the residential piece and largely what we've been doing. We're starting to, and here in comes AMCP, right? We, 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 we have these outpatient centers that connect to the hall, but also, you know, work independently. One of the parts of the thesis is to connect those in there. Something that admittedly is not my forte, I'm learning. And here in comes not just an influx of capital from another organization, but they have had a host of experience over decades of helping individu- individual companies, in fact, take multiple service lines, multiple product lines, connect them to one, right, continuous brand. I'm excited about that. A lot of Rob's and I's discussions are about that. I think that can only, again, increase efficacy. So, so as we meet the residential need, which is the tip of the spear, right? That's where people are en masse at me. That's where it starts. We believe that we will probably, right? Go, go further down the continuum of care and add, and, 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 and create add-on services. But we're starting to get further out. It takes time to, to buy land, cultivate, build houses, bring kids in. It's a process.
Hearing Officer Novy, if I may, Brett Tiberio speaking. I just also want to add that access has, has always been a priority of ours and um, we, we currently are a participating CT Medicaid provider. Um, and we also have in-network relationships with the two largest commercial insurers in, in the state in Blue Cross Blue Shield and, uh, United Healthcare or Optum Behavioral Health. Um, so we, you know, that's always been a priority of us and will remain a priority of, for, for us, is making sure that not only is, is accessibility defined by sort of the volume of services provided, but also the cost of services provided.
Which is a, a point, uh, David View, again, CEO, founder, you know, through, through, and, and we've just been renegotiating our payer contracts. Um, you know, the average family can go to Killingworth, let's use that as an example, which provides adolescent residential treatment for children ages 14, 17 years old, for their deductible, which ranges anywhere from 500 bucks to, to, to $1,500. The quality of the, the, the infrastructure there, uh, the buildings, the residences. Then let's get into team. This is not a new organization. I founded this 23 years ago. We've been cultivating talent, which by the way, in comes the North Castles of the world. The more, the more money we have, it allows us to, to, to search countrywide, the best doctors, the best clinicians, right, and move them in. And that has probably been the most effective part of the North Castle, uh, uh, partnership. But unfortunately, the last four or five years, as they got long in the tooth in this investment and their own organizational, right, you know, differences, uh, uh, challenges and whatnot, capital dried up. Um, in comes Rob. We have the ability to do that, and we're investing in human capital for, just lack of a better word, people and good people. Um, so, so, you know, this idea that a family can come in to these world-class facilities, to a very, very mature organization that has developed systems that have been replicated countrywide for $500 is just a point of pride for our organization. And we continue to do that. And as you think about, you know, access in the different levels of care, I think what we're doing is just very practical. We're starting at the tip of the spear, the entry point, where we're going to meet them at the residential end, right? We're going to build that first because that's where they start. And then we will add on further down the continuum of care.
Um, I have a follow-up question. You said you just negotiated insurance contracts with, um, for insurance providers. Who was on that team?
So that was Brett Tiberio and myself exclusively. Uh, that doesn't mean we transparency. We don't rely on teams beneath us to provide data. Because often in these negotiations, they want to understand efficacy. They want to understand a lot of the things that you're, that, that you're trying to understand, quite frankly. And so, but, but as far as the negotiation goes, as a, for instance, and I'll really bring you sort of that a story to help you understand. We invite them to our campus. They come to Killingworth. They sit down. Brett and I attend. Right? They may bring four, five, six people, one or two people, depending on the insurance company. We show them the, the facilities, walk them through process, help them understand how we make the soup. They request a ton of data. We go over that data and we talk about need, access, cost, et cetera. So we then do that and report to, at this particular time, it's complicated. I then specifically report to Chip Barrett, right, from North Castle, and then separately report to Rob Hayes of AMCP as to what we did, how it's going and where it's going. They both say, hey, is there anything that we could do to support you in that? And very honestly, the answer has been no. Keep you updated as to how it's going.
Do they have any?
One of those contract negotiations has finished, um, and that is largely Blue Cross Blue Shield and all its affiliates and different companies and and corporate structure. And we're working with, you know, United Healthcare separately in all of their affiliates and extra, and that's ongoing. And I cannot stress enough that neither Rob Hayes, Chip Beer, any of their associates uh, were in any of the meetings, were brought into any of the meetings. And in this particular case, sorry, Rob, when asked if he could help, I said no. So this is something we've been doing. We do, we understand that. Um, and we're in those negotiations and they're ongoing negotiations. We've renegotiated, right, to the dismay of set payers many, many times.
Will these procedures or will this practice continue with the new, uh, ownership?
No. And, and again, we have, I think, again, unique circumstances here that, that given the contract and how these, you know, very very lengthy contracts go, when you're requiring, requiring, acquiring an asset as large as Turnbridge, there are rules, right? So, so Rob and, and AMCP are allowed in, in need to, and, and fairly should understand what's happening and what we're doing. So we're in a reporting phase, um, which gives them the ability to get in there and make decisions. They have not. Okay, that's not to say Rob Hayes and I don't talk a lot about where we would expand, how we do that. How's the negotiating going with, with the guy that owns the land? It's very helpful for me. Not that I don't have Brett as a, as a president. It's been an honor or privilege to work with him. It's really nice. Rob is an incredibly smart guy, as is Chip Barrett. They've owned a, a host of different organizations, right, you know, in, in different industries. And the knowledge that comes from that is very comforting. So it, it, it validates a lot of, 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 of what I'm thinking, how it's going. So in a lot of ways, it's, 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 it's a safety thing. But they will not, I, I think, and Rob already said it as succinctly as he could, cannot, don't understand enough to get in there and do it. Again, I don't want to speak for Rob and he's here and could do it. One of the main conditions Rob had in acquiring this asset, which was the same condition I had on the flip side. He wouldn't do this if the management team didn't stay in place. He has a host of different contractual provisions that, that quote unquote, you know, lack of better word, force, obligate those of us to do so. Okay? On the flip side, I said, I will not do this, okay? Unless those provisions are in place to a certain degree that make it so that you aren't going to come in and starting, start getting over your skis and making decisions that could impact the fabric of what we do, our brand nationally, if not internationally, is very important to me. And, and, and no offense to the Robs, the North Castles of the world, whereby you have experience in multiple different industries, you have zero experience. in multiple different industries, you have zero experience, right, in running our organization. And the asset that you're purchasing is a culmination of a host of different things we have done. To say that if we don't continue doing them, you might get a different asset. Which is not what they want and not what we want. I cannot emphasize enough that the people that I've chosen, knock on wood, have allowed us to make those decisions. When they ask how we can support, I, I allow the support that I think makes sense.
Hearing Officer Novi, I, I apologize to interrupt. I think the witness may have misunderstood your prior question. Just, I, I think the question was, will the process change as a result of this, uh, application if it is improved? And, and I believe you said no. I, your answer sounded like you were saying that the process will stay the same after this application is improved. I, I just wanted to see if you wanted to possibly clarify your answer, Mr. View.
Yeah, Hearing Officer Novi, to directly answer your question, this is Brett Tiberio speaking. The, the process of negotiating rates with payers, et cetera, will not change as a result of the, the, the application. Both David and I will be, be the primary, uh, parties responsible for, for doing that.
For the record, uh, and just for the record, I said no, and I contend to be verbose and give you a bunch of examples as to why that would not change. But emphatically, no.
Um, let's, uh, you also mentioned that going to AMCP would allow you to bring in a, a variety of doctors from a larger applicant pool or from around the country. Um, what effect would AMCP have on HR, you know, on HR practices? And, you know, can you expand upon that a little more?
Again, just for the record, zero and none. Um, they are not, they don't get below that level down into the HR, uh, platform. The way they provide access there is, the, the way we are able to, 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 to go out and, and, and bring in more talent is through providing more access, which provides more revenue ultimately. And as we're providing more beds, what we need to hire more people, um, and that provides more revenue. So that's how that happens, which is why I need more people.
Uh, in the addition of what is right now eight beds, um, and then hopefully would be more beds in the new house. I do have a question about, um, what percentage of those new treatment beds would be available to Connecticut residents?
Well, I mean, effectively all of them, right? It's so, and it really depends on, you know, who's calling at the time and where they're coming from. But certainly all of them, and if they all were calls from Connecticut, then, then they would all come in. And I, I don't recall exactly if we gave, how detailed we gave on, on, on how they came in and that that's something you never happened to do it. Um, and, you know, we, we sort of look at Connecticut and sort of the tri-state area is a large feeding source for, for us, right? Because certainly parents of, of children would like to drive down and see their children. And so just through that, uh, 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 obvious fact, the market, wherever you'd want it to be, and just, you know, we want it to be Connecticut in the tri-state area. Uh, it works for us and it works for the families. And I think when you get into programming, you know, this is a family disease. And having the families involved is very, very important and that plays a role to efficacy. So very emphatically for the record, all of them. And then depending on who calls, we certainly, you know, we, we service the need.
Um, you mentioned, uh, oh, sorry, I didn't know if anybody wanted to.
Hi, Rob Hayes, partner at A and M Capital. Um, we're a Connecticut-based firm and acutely aware of the shortage of care for these patients in Connecticut. And we want additional access for patients in Connecticut. So that there is linkage, like I'm, I'm in Southern Connecticut right now in our offices. We are involved in the communities. We have families who, and friends who have young people, uh, that are inflicted by this mental health crisis. So we are acutely aware and focused not just of access to care, but access to care also in Connecticut.
Um, Rob, I'm gonna stick, or, or Mr. Hayes, I'm gonna stick with you. Um, what made your group form this AMPC treatment to pursue investment in, um, in this company?
So very directly, the, the entity is an investment vehicle we use to invest into this company.
Yes.
We've had a thesis, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, why, why did you create this?
So we, we've had an investment thesis or a proactive initiative, uh, built over the better part of six years to invest into this sector. And we identified a mismatch of supply and demand of services. There's a large patient population that is, uh, not being treated. There are not beds or services available for these young people. And we, we see there is an opportunity to increase the access to care. This is a, we, we've met with many, many different companies. And one of the characteristics of this company was its high level of efficacy. It's in-network commercial insurance partnerships, which increases the access to care. Many competitors, many other providers that we became aware of are out of network, which means the cost of care is more for patients. The cost of care is more for the health system and the access to care is less. Turnbridge is the, is in-network, which is the opposite of that, right? Lower cost to individual families and patients, lower cost to the health system and increased access to care.
Uh, will AMCP have any role in, uh, or, uh, give any advice on the billing and collection practices at Turnbridge and CT Clinical Partners?
So, so we are board member investors, we are not operators. The manager operators of the business, um, as, as we've discussed during our testimony, right? It's David View, it's, uh, Brett Tiberio and the existing team that's in place.
Okay, I think that this.
Hearing Officer Novi, this is David View, speaking on Turnbridge. This obviously is a question that's very meaningful to you and I think a fair question. And, and, and at the risk of, again, of being verbose, I always think it's important to give color and just humanize this process. We, we, myself, Brett Tiberio and Rob Hayes have all emphatically said that Rob is, there will be a wall between Rob, AMCP and, and negotiating. But, but, but hold on a second, let's just talk his people. That doesn't mean that I don't talk to Rob about like how to negotiate. Through his experience that maybe, you know, you're deeper than mine, but maybe, and we've had this conversation. Let me just give an example, again, at the risk of being verbose. Rob said, hey, we found, or, or through his experience, that payers care about tax, maybe have that data. So, so this is where, right, the partnership, right, between two partners talking about obviously getting better rates through in-network payers. Rob and I don't get into, he doesn't participate in it, we do the negotiating. And he doesn't get into exactly how that's going to go. He might offer enhanced, hey, we found that they care about this data. Do you guys have it? You might want to present it. And that's where the partnership, just humans. So yeah, emphatically, no, Rob is not on that call, he's not negotiating, doesn't have enough, you know, institutional knowledge of Turnbridge to, to do that. But he has a lot of business knowledge, right? And, and just personal knowledge. And, and we share those things and whiteboard them back and forth, you know? And that is very meaningful for me and from a human perspective. And, and again, I can't say enough, he's a super intelligent man and has a lot of experience. And, and some of those I take and some I don't. There's a saying, take what you need and leave the rest. And that's the process. And then we go off and we manage and Brett and I build a PowerPoint and, and bring them in and, and do that process. Then I call Rob back and say, here's how it went and we get excited or not. And that's the process.
I'm gonna, what aspects of AMCP's parent or affiliate's experience uh, led you to choose them as a financial partner over others who may have come to you, to, to partner with you?
David View, CEO, the most important. This was, was a process. Again, I wear my feelings on my sleeve, I'm going to be me. I have a lot of trepidation every time there's a change because there's change. And along the things that you're concerned about or just want information about are the exact same things I'm concerned about, want information about, actually. And so instead of just, you know, getting anxiety over it, you know, over, over several months as we were contemplating the change of financial sponsor, I create lists of questions and things I want answered. That becomes the interview process of new financial sponsor. Cannot focus enough. We didn't just take it out to bid, you give me the money and it's like, oh, by the way, how do you manage me? This was a process of asking questions. We eliminated, we, Turnbridge eliminated, right? 30 different organizations that had interest over a year, driving into New York, talking about our organization, hearing about their organization and then getting with, you know, the business brokers that, that connect, right? Potential people that have an organization, potential people that want to purchase an organization. And we whittled them down. Rob, AMCP was down to a short list. Okay, we went through those pros and cons. We continued to bring them back. They came onto campus. It was a dialogue, partly given Rob specifically worked for North Castle. That partnership was exponentially successful. The access that we created, the research that we did, the levels of care, the systems that we brought into those levels of care. Do you know that if you come to the extended care service line that we provide, stay north of 280 days, you have a 96% chance of making it year one? North of 80% chance of making it year two. These statistics, the delta between those and the average organization are 40 to 50 basis points. That was part of our partnership with North Castle. North Castle did not treat a single client or whatnot. What they did is help us with the research to codify and do that. So, so, so that is just a really good enumerated example of how that works. Okay, Rob worked for North Castle. When I spoke with Chip Baird, okay, the principal founder of North Castle, he spoke incredibly highly of Rob. Chip Baird and I have become incredible friends through this process. And he said, I know who you are, I know how you run the business, I know what's important to you. And money falls subservient to helping humans. Rob Hayes, through my experience with him, is a very similar man. That moved their organization up. But that only brought us to then 150 questions about how this was going to go. And I thought, I think the best way to get there was to start talking about thesis. And when we started talking about how we would grow together, that map went from skeletal to firm. That's how we made the decision.
So currently, your financial investor owns 63%. Um, why is AMCP increasing their equity ownership to 90%?
Yeah, Hearing Officer Novi, this is Brett Tiberio speaking. Um, a, a lot of, the, the percentages are, are mostly just a function of how the equity was, was valued and, and what, um, A, AMCP is actually investing into the, the business. So the percentages change based on that equity valuation. Um, but it was important for, uh, e- existing Turnbridge ownership and, and operators, myself, David, among them, to continue to, um, be a part of that ownership structure. And, and we live within that 10%. And, um, that was something that I think for both A and M, A, AMCP and also, uh, CT Clinical, um, that we wanted to make sure that that continued post-transaction. Um, the reason being, we believe in, in, in our organization, we believe in the care that we provide. Um, and, and for, for AMCP, uh, having, uh, operators and leaders within the organization that also have incentive from an ownership perspective was very important to, to them and, and their decision to, to invest in our organization.
Hi, Rob Hayes, partner with AMCP. Uh, in addition, we have committed to provide more than 10% of the ownership incremental back into the managers in Turnbridge. So the, the pro forma, if you will, ownership will be higher. And that is in a quantitative financial way, how committed we are to not just David and Brett, but their team who deliver, who manages this business.
I, I, can you rephrase that? Cause I'm not quite sure I understood what you, what you meant by 10% of the ownership back into the management team.
Yeah, we're granting it to, back to the management team if this transaction, if you grant this transaction to go forward.
So would you own 80% or do you still own 90?
So we'll technically 90% of the company, but then there will be incentive equity or kind of thing of options for the management team that does not cost them anything, but they participate as if they were equity owners. So we're literally like, we'll be taking less of our ownership and providing that to management because that's how important we think they are to, to running this business.
David View, CEO, very influential, uh, Hearing Officer Novi, in my decision-making. And you asked, uh, and this is brought up, it's just first memory. You know, in addition to providing care for families, I have hundreds of employees, many of which, again, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with and, and they stay 10 years plus. Uh, many of them have gone through our programs and we created opportunities for them to work here. And a big part of being the CEO is providing for their future, their children's college, braces, uh, retirement. And it was very important that the AMCPs of the world put their money where their mouth is. That for us to, to deliver best-in-class care, we need best-in-class providers, best-in-class employees. And we need to take care of them. And this is a substantial amount of money when you look at the actual numbers that goes in. And we've got spreadsheets that, 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 that this isn't being taken at the top. That, that there are 30, 40 people that are going to participate in this, that it's going to be meaningful for them and their families and their children. So, and that's just another way we deliver it, right? And this is not the tip of the top takes the money in any way, shape or form. So, so that was a very, very important thing to me. Cause it says a couple of things, we're invest, investing in your people, right? And that allows you to take care of them.
And, and again, sorry, it's Rob Hayes, partner at A and M Capital. Um, of what that translates into, that this dialogue, right, is supporting jobs in Connecticut, right? And supporting higher quality caregivers, giving them technology, uh, to do their jobs, right? And, and that's, uh, the number of jobs that Turnbridge has created and grown, um, is, is remarkable for the state.
David View, Turnbridge becomes, we're, we're a teacher, you know, when you, when you, when we hire people, they go through an extensive teaching process. So many people start here, right? They're coming to Turnbridge and we teach them how to be clinicians. And there's an exhaustive, uh, you know, professional and clinical development arm here, also born out of the North Castle partnership through revenue and capital. I should also speak to, there's a research on, right? That allows us to develop new treatment programs. So, so, you know, when I made this decision 10 years ago, looking back at it, it was an unbelievable partnership. We completely nailed the thesis and we did much more than that. We, we, we through Yale do research on a daily basis on how children think, how the familial system works, right? How to better help people. Um, so there, there's just a lot here.
All right, so at this point, I'm going to, um, I'm going to have us take a quick break. I would just like to meet with my analysts, firm up what we need for late files, if we need any additional, um, and then we will come back and, uh, I will give the attorneys a chance to ask any questions they have of their applicants. And then we'll head into the public portion, closing statements after the public portion. And they'll conclude the hearing. Um, so, uh, let's take about a 25-minute break. If we could come back at 10:55 so I can have time to give everybody a break and get those late files together. Um, I remind everybody that while we are on break, this may still be recording even though we attempt to turn it off. So please, um, mute yourself and turn your cameras off unless you would like to remain on view for everybody in this hearing. We will see you all again at 10:55. Thank you. All right, as you were just notified by Zoom, you are being recorded. If you wish to revoke your consent to being recorded, please exit the meeting at this time. All right, it is now 10:55. Uh, good morning, we will come back into session. This is the CON hearing for CT Clinical Services Incorporated and AMCP Treatment Intermedia LLC, document number 24-32770-CON. Um, we just took a 25-minute break. I do have, um, one follow-up question I would like to ask, and then we'll go into attorney questions. Uh, this is for Mr. Hayes. Um, Mr. Hayes, could you explain at a, at a really elementary level, um, the 10% ownership? Uh, you, that, um, the 90, that you owe 90%, but then 10% would be ceded if certain conditions were met? I'm not quite sure I understood that. So if you could take that to a, a very basic level for us.
Absolutely. So in essence, there's a redistribution of 10% ownership of the, of the, the at closing ownership that will get distributed to the management team. And there are vesting criteria. An example is that the management, uh, member has to continue to work at the company, right? And that, that would, they in essence would have a ability to participate in the future equity value of the business as if they were owners. of the business, as if they were owners, but without having to invest money themselves. So this rewards management team members as both employees and investors.
All right.
It it's very management friendly.
Okay, I think I understand it this time, thank you.
Absolutely.
At this point, I will ask your attorneys, Attorney Jensen and Attorney Karen Ante, do you have any questions you would like to ask?
Um, behalf of Turnbridge, we do not, attorney, attorney, no.
And on behalf of AMCP, no further questions, thank you.
All right, so at this point, I would like to um just remind everybody that if you would like to give a public, we are going into the public portion, and if you would like to sign up to make a comment during the public portion, please do so at this time in the chat feature, if you haven't already, by listing your name and your phone number so that uh our support staff can go ahead and I'll um put you on the list to make a comment. Um, for those of you who are just joining us now, um, this is the public portion of our hearing, and we will call names of anybody who has registered to speak. Uh, Ms. Capose, do we have anyone um signed up to speak?
Not at this time.
All right, so I'm going to ask anybody who is in this meeting or in this hearing right now. Uh, if you would like to speak, please um go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name for the record. All right, I hear none. So at this time, I will go ahead and move on to, I just want to recap the late files, and then we'll move into closing statements. And we will uh end end the hearing. So as a recap for the late files, I have three late files listed. Late file one being a list of all locations being brought, uh, including the DCF locations um on table one of page nine.
Understood.
I'm sorry, Bates, page nine. Uh, number two will be, um, oh, wait, I just got the text done. Oh, okay, um, number two is the PSA for each of the facilities, including a breakdown of the forty-eight percent of out-of-state patients, um, and where they are coming from at a state level, it doesn't need to be a town level for the out-of-state patients. So if twenty percent of, you know, if sixty uh patients come from Massachusetts, and eighty come from New York, that is a acceptable level of breakdown.
Attorney, no, can I interrupt one second? Um, you said something I had not uh written down the first time. So I thought, uh, originally, it was just you wanted the breakdown of the hundred and seventy-two out-of-staters. You just wanted a breakdown of what states they, those one hundred and seventy-two, where those patients are coming from.
It's the original chart that you provided with a break, with including the breakdown at the state level for the, which you list is out-of-state one hundred and seventy-two.
Correct, but what I heard you say is a PSA for all, all of, that's where I'm getting confused.
All right, let's go with the original, I'm reading off of what was written into uh our our question document. But no, I, uh, let's go with the original thing, which was, we are going to reissue the um, the table ten with including a breakdown for the hundred and seventy-two out-of-state patients at a state level.
Perfect, thank you. All right, please, please continue, sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, and then, uh, late file three is for AMPC, and it is, please, and it's uh it's um, give illustrative examples of access and quality improvements in previous acquisitions. Examples are technology improvements, um, how they improved quality in the facilities uh by freeing up, so, you know, medical staff, things of examples of those nature.
Understood.
All right, and those are the three late files. What um, what are you looking at for turnarounds? What um, what could, for timeframes to get those back to me, I like to make sure we can give you enough time.
Sure, we were thinking next Friday.
Would you like a little more time than that, just in case?
Uh, no, we're looking for approval, uh, as soon as possible, so we can start the investing and the action. So, um.
Let's go with six-six, uh, Attorney Jensen, can you do that as well?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so let's have those due on six-six of uh June sixth of twenty twenty-five. Um, and we will issue an order on that later today. So now we'll move to our closing arguments, um, or statements from the applicant's attorneys. Uh, Attorney Jensen, Attorney Karen Ante, would you both like to make one, or would one of you like to?
Um, I'll I'll let Attorney Jensen go first, I have I have my own comment.
Uh, we're not planning to offer a closing, but thank you for your time today.
All right, with that, I will go ahead and close the hearing, I would like to thank everybody who's attended.
But Attorney, um, sorry, I wasn't clear, I let Attorney Jensen go first, I just, would you, it's okay, um, no problem. Uh, I was unclear, would you permit um our CEO and founder to make just a a brief closing room, brief closing remarks?
Of course, I I apologize, Attorney Karen Ante, I thought you said you weren't making.
Yeah, well, I'm not, but but Mr. View would just like one minute.
No, oh, yeah, no, of course.
High-level closing remarks, and and then uh, and then.
No problem.
David, you need. Yeah, David View, CEO, founder, uh, Turnbridge, you know, a a lot of thoughts come to mind, but uh, to Vin's point, I'll try to be as succinct as possible. Uh, first, I I I'm I'm embarrassed that that the 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 way we answer the questions around the jurisdiction wasn't more accurate and had more depth. I I just, I, ownership starts here, fell into this sort of thought, what jurisdiction was. Um, so I just, I just want for the record to know that we certainly weren't hiding anything. And I thought, moving on to sort of like, you know, another point I have, that the questions that you did ask about the organization, how we were gonna interrelate, you know, with AMCP, were very fair questions. Uh, and it gave us the opportunity to explain to you what we were thinking. Um, you know, which brings up my third point, which is, I'm I'm staying on, I've been doing this for multiple decades and here for two-plus, um, you know, due to this partnership. And I think it's important for the record that, again, this was a process of elimination of many potential suitors, if you will. And I'm staying and investing, you know, north of ten million dollars of my own proceeds, certainly my time. Um, um, and my heart into this. And 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 obviously, we've written exhaustively about what AMCP brings as an organization. But that's, that's part of why I'm staying. It is the human beings, and in the end of the day, you make decisions that are multifold. We looked at this through synergies, as I've said before, I had hundreds of questions that eliminated people. But in the end, it is Rob Hayes and Tommy and 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 on and on. Through that process, you know, you had asked, and I thought about it, how I made the decision. The one thing I didn't bring up that I think is important to note, I have gone up personally with these guys all the way to the founder of A and M Capital, multiple times, eaten dinner, played golf, hung out, bet out to Arizona to look at potential acquisitions we might make. I mean, this was part of the process, whether they knew it or not, sorry, Rob, it was still part of my interviewing process. I've met all of them, hung out with all of them, and can see myself, right, continuing to do what I do at Turnbridge with them. And it's very meaningful for me. Um, so I think the other thing that's important to note is is if you don't approve this, and I say this with no contention, just from my heart, the capital that we need to continue to meet the access will be halted, literally. The houses that we're building, the construction stops, we're talking about literally in the middle of doing this, it stops. I don't wanna put any pressure on in any way, shape, or form, but I do think it's important to note that in addition to the wonderful relationships I've already cultivated over nine months, my vision, our shared thesis, we really are not just writing this down and saying it, we need the capital, there is a mental health crisis, this is super important to me personally. It's touched my own life, uh, I have a daughter, um, I am in tune with the families and the kids, building these homes, connecting them to the business infrastructure, it is a business, but it's real, families get helped here. Um, and and we need it, and 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 I wholeheartedly believe that it's the right thing for the state of Connecticut, it's the right thing for families, it's the right thing for Turnbridge, it's the right thing for AMCP. And I wanna close by thanking you for the oversight, which is probably, you know, very generic. Um, but your questions that you asked were the same questions I asked. Um, maybe I wanted the time to go faster, but the truth is, these are very fair questions. Um, and hopefully, we answered them honestly, transparently, and got you a G. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Attorney Karen Ante, any? I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Sorry, we're we're done, bro.
Okay, sorry, sometimes my hearing is not as good as it used to be. All right, at this point, I would like to thank everybody who's attended this hearing today, thank you for your time and attention to this. Uh, it is now eleven oh seven. Um, this hearing is hereby adjourned, but the record will remain open until closed by OHS at a later date. Thank you, everybody, and have a great day.